Blue folder. You guys read the beautiful letter? Are you ready? All right, everybody good? All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Do you want to do roll call?
Commissioner Cardenas?
President.
Commissioner Sue?
President.
Commissioner Douglas? Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Here.
And Chair Chaff?
Here.
Okay, you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Will do. Please raise your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for doing that. Okay, approve order of the agenda. I approve it. Blue folder items, we have one item that I believe everybody has read. Do I need to do anything other than?
Just need a motion to receive and file.
Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive.
Second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, I'm assuming no. Consent calendar, 7A. Approve affidavit of posting for the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 7B. Approve the minutes for the June 17, 2025.
Make a motion to approve items 7A and 7B.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. Good consent counter items, non-public hearings of items continued from previous meeting. Public hearings, so the first one is zoning case number 25-033. This is for... Stephanie, you're gonna give us an overview on this? Perfect, thank you. I didn't see it.
Good evening.
You wanna wait one second so everybody gets situated here? Trying to see.
Okay. Once again, good evening, Honorable Planning Commissioners. I'm here to present zoning case number 25-033. This is for the project that's located at 1 Hackamore Road. This is just a brief overview of the project. At this time, the applicants have requested to redesign the plans to address some of the neighbors' concerns. There were some height issues that came up during the... after they had staked and silhouetted the project. So there may be some changes to the future project because, you know, there still will be the barn, but there may be some additional discretionary reviews that may require future renoticing. So I'm just gonna provide like an overview of what the project is, a little bit of the site background. It is zoned RES1. It is a smaller lot. The net lot area is 1.18 acres, 51,576 square feet, and the residence was built back in 1949. It is currently developed... sorry about that number. With a 2,8785 square foot main residence. It has a garage, swimming pool, a pool equipment area. There's a shed, outdoor kitchen, and there's an existing 915 square foot corral. As you can see, the subject property is located on... it's zoned RES1. It is on the corner of Hackamore and Eastfield. So this was the summary of the approvals that were needed. It did require... they did request a site plan review for a two-story stable, non-exempt grading, which was 604 cubic yards total. Some of the retaining walls, retaining walls that were located in the back of the barn. Those were maximum... would exceed the three feet maximum, but wouldn't exceed five foot maximum. That required a site plan review. Also, the building pad expansion. The existing building pad is 2,067 square feet. It was gonna... they were gonna add a total of 2,349 square feet. The building pad would have been raised to about three to six feet. And so the total area for the building pad would be 5,649. Now, of course, this was the original proposal, and this could possibly change. The conditional use permit is required for the barn. Any barns that exceed 200 square feet in the city require conditional use permit. The proposed total square footage for their barn would be 2,903 square feet. It's a two-story barn with a hayloft and attack room. As for the variances that were requested, though, it's a smaller lot. Like I said, it's 1.18 acres. Therefore, it does exceed the 40% maximum disturbed area. The proposed disturbance, additional disturbance, is 7% and 7.11%. So they are requesting a variance for the additional disturbance. Here's a rendering of the stable. The top of the ridge height, the highest point of the stable height would be 20 feet, and the size is 2,093 square feet. This is the east elevation of the stable, so you can get an idea of, you know, what the stable is gonna look like. We did have some neighbor concerns. On July 14th, we had one of the residents come in, Mr. Greg Noel. He lives at 8 Hackamore Road. He expressed some of his concerns. Then he also came into the city on July 15th. He came in to review the plans in person. He expressed his concerns with the neighbor across the way. There's a possibility that the ocean view would be obstructed from the proposed barn. He also mentioned some parking issues, but... So then, on July 21st, you received the supplemental blue folder item at this... this... tonight. It's been included, so you guys have a copy of that letter. There were some concerns in the letter. I'm sure you guys have read them. And so you guys did get a copy of the blue folder item. So on July 15th, the applicants did come into the city. They met with staff to request some of the, you know, changes. They wanted to make some... redesign the plans and address some of the changes, you know, and some of the issues with the view obstructions. So the applicants have been working with the neighbors, and they have decided, you know, to redesign the barn. This is the line of sight. This is 6 Hackamore right here. This yellow area would be the proposed barn. So the northeast section, this corner right here, it's... would be obstructed. The view, this is the line of sight. This would be the view obstruction right here, in this corner, right here. Here is a photograph. So this would be this area right here. This kind of blocks the ocean view right here. And this is looking from 6 Hackamore to the east side. So they did come up with some redesigned concepts, which I think might, you know... these are what they're proposing. Here's the previous footprint. And then this is the new footprint. Right now, the existing footprint does not encroach into the rear setback. This is a property line, and then this is a rear setback. So the barn is not encroaching into the rear setback. What they're proposing would be to push the barn back. This, the blue footprint right here, is the new footprint, about 18 feet, which would also encroach into the rear setback. So they would probably request a variance. Also, they would lower the pad four feet. So right now, the proposed level of the pad that would be raised between three to six feet, would be raised up to six feet. So by lowering the finished floor to six feet, I mean four feet, that would also lower the ridge height too, by four feet. So lowering that by four feet. And they're also proposing to rotate the building nine feet into the slope. So... And this project is categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 1503, Class 3, new construction of single-family residence and accessory structures. So our recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony, provide direction to staff and the applicants. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, the applicant is here. The applicant and their architect are here if you want to ask any questions, and staff is here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I don't know that there's a whole lot to discuss because we don't know what the final product is going to look like. We'll let the public comment because we've got it on the agenda, so we'll hear what they have to say. Do you guys have any questions?
What was the square footage of the barn? Did it change from revision 1 to 2?
So far, I think the... that's the same. It's 2,093 square feet.
Okay. Is that within our... I forget what our max is for the barn.
Our max is... it requires a conditional use permit for anything that's over 200 square feet. Yeah. There's like no max.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, Tom, I'm gonna open it up to the public. If you want to speak, please come up, state your name, so we can get it on the record.
Hi, I'm Melanie Micho.
Speak into the mic.
He usually says I'm too loud, but...
I don't think so.
Melanie Micho, I'm the resident at 1 Hackamore. Just to clarify, there'll be no changes to the design of the barn. We're just shifting it into the hillside. And right now, we have three 50-foot setbacks on our property. So that rear setback is kind of more of a side setback for that property. It's just called a rear setback. So that shift into the setback, which would allow the whole structure to drop four feet because of the grade, it would encroach... if it was a side setback, it wouldn't encroach in that area. So just to clarify that. And that the barn itself isn't gonna change. We have like a preapproval from the HOA at this point.
Try as best you can to stay out of easements and setbacks and everything else.
Yeah.
You do have a fairly large area there. Kind of play with it.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's early on in the design. Really appreciate you working with the neighbors to try to keep everybody happy.
Yes.
Don't know if it's possible, but... but it's always nice when you do that because hopefully they'll be your neighbors for a long time, and it's great that you get along. But thank you for listening, and thank you for trying to figure out what the proper design is. And obviously, you know, we'll work with you. There's certain challenges to, as that lot drops off, but do your best to try to keep it out.
Yes.
As best you can. And again, we don't have to get into detail right now.
Yes.
We'll... as you redesign it, you'll figure it out.
Yeah, we're...
It'll start to talk to you.
Those movements are all to kind of accommodate basically the neighbor views.
Yeah.
Which we were happy to.
But I think that dropping it is the right solution because then it gets the ridge line out of...
That was the main request from them. And that's the only reason we presented it, yeah.
And that may create some retaining walls. We'll have to work with you on that.
No, okay.
Okay. Well, anyways, I appreciate you listening. Any comments or...
How many stalls does the barn? For how many horses?
How many horses?
It was six, I believe.
Okay. Any reason six versus four versus three? Is there... is that you're trying to maximize just because you think you're gonna have six horses, or...
It's actually three, sorry. Three with two storage areas for equipment.
This structure will have all the appearance...
Hey, guys.
Yes.
Why don't you come up afterwards so we can get you on the record? I can't have the audience speaking without...
Oh, no, I'm not.
No, you'd have to come up.
Oh, okay.
Again, if you want to talk, I'm happy to listen, but you gotta come up. Okay?
Is there anything else?
Take a gun.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. We really do appreciate it. And I'm sorry to change it. Once we put up mistakes...
No, listen, we appreciate you being flexible and listening to what the neighbors have to say. So don't apologize. Listen, we want to try to get you in and out of this as fast as we can.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we've got to have a good product that we approve in the end.
Of course.
Right? And you working with your neighbors. Some of their requests and demands are reasonable. Some are not gonna be reasonable.
Yeah.
We will look at all of that, right? So just because they're telling you you have to do something doesn't necessarily mean that you have to do certain things.
Yeah, we're trying to figure that out.
Okay, so keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Right? So...
We're doing everything we can.
And I appreciate that. And this is a process, and we will walk through it together. And hopefully, at the end, you get as close to what you are looking for as possible.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Okay, so I'm gonna close that to the... from the public. And any comments, feedback?
More of a question, particularly for our resident horse person, Sean. So it in... when you look at designing, and you've done yourself on a barn, I'm kind of curious, when they talk about the stalls, you look at how many horses you want to... how much... is that a concern? Or you typically build whatever frankly large is reasonable for the lot? And I'm just looking at that because if they went down... I'm just guessing when I say this. If they went from three down to two, would they probably not have the easement problem that we discussed? But I don't know if that's a reasonable request.
I wouldn't consider it reasonable, but, you know, anyone who's ever owned horses knows it fluctuates, and it can be very expensive. But I think building a barn, especially the size that they've set out to do on that property, is fitting. I wouldn't try and reduce the amount to, you know, massage the neighbor concerns about the view or something like that. But barns come in all sizes and shapes, and one residence use might be different from the next person owns a property. And as long as there's enough room for them to move around outside, they could have a... and it fits with what we're trying to do here. They have a 12-stall barn. So, yeah, I think that that barn is reasonable for that lot and, you know, to keep several horses.
Okay. All right, so we will hold this over till the next meeting.
Thank you.
Everybody good with that? Do I need to do...
We would need a motion to continue the item.
I'll make a motion to continue item 25-033 until next month's meeting.
Great.
My second.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on. 10B, zoning case number 25-029. This is for 1 George F. Road. Would you like to give us an overview?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Honorable Chair members of the Commission. Today, I present to you 1 George F. Road, zoning case number 25-029. There are several variances. One conditional use permit and site plan review for new construction and other improvements. The zoning on this one is RES2, so it is a larger lot. You'll see the star indicating that it's in RES2. The property was... is in a regular-shaped lot. You'll see by the radius map. The notice was sent to 1,000... within 1,000 radius of the property. This is just a simple vicinity map indicating the location of the property, and it actually is a clearer picture of the existing house, 8,600-square-foot house on the property, tennis court, playground area, and set aside. As further background, it's RES2. The net lot area is 2,009 square feet, 2,009, 980 square feet, 4.82 acres. Again, as stated in this morning's field trip, two pads. The first pad is 99,000 square feet. The second pad is 3,200 square feet, and basically contains the access and stable corral set-aside area. The existing single... 8,600 single-family... square foot, single-family residence will be demolished. It contains an 830-square-foot garage, which is basically four cars. The 6,800-square-foot tennis court remains, and the pool will be downsized somewhat to 685 from 700 existing. As further background, mentioned this at the field trip today, there was a lot line adjustment that had been finalized in 2015, thus creating four lots. 1 George F., 3 George F., 1 Buckboard Lane, and 8 Crest Road East. The applications before you tonight are construction for a 12,000-square-foot home. Walls exceeding three-foot high, no higher than five feet. The conditional use permit is for the tennis... proposed tennis cabana. That's 792 square feet, and that's over 200 square feet. And two variances. Construction in the front yard for retaining walls that may go up to five feet, not to exceed five feet, and site disturbance over 40%. As a result of the lot line adjustments, the lot is currently 52%. So they're asking to exceed it a little bit more to have a little more square footage. Here's the site plant... a site plan. Note that in green is the footprint of the existing house that we saw today. The three-car garage will become a six-car tandem garage. The house pretty much stays the same, but it gets bumped out. This is the gym area. We walked down the hill to the tennis court, proposed cabana. Then we walked to the orchard area, walked down the hill to the set-aside stable area. So adding about 3,000 or 4,000 more square feet. The development table shows you in blue what the zoning code allows and what the applicant is proposing. Structural coverage are going to 11% with the house, the cabana, anything with a roof. Flatwork, 35% max, 13 is what they're proposing. Structural, 35% max, 24 is what they're proposing. The disturbed area, they do need a variance for this. They are requesting this, is 40% max. It's currently 52% because of the lot... the lot line adjust... or sub... the parcel map a few years ago. They are requesting to go to 55, a little bit more. And finally, the building pad coverage. For pad 1 is 30%, 23 max. This morning... excuse me. Yeah. No, I'll get to that later. Here's the floor plan. I didn't highlight the basement, but there will be a basement 700-square-foot right under the garage. You'll see the steps here from the garage. You walk in, there's a bedroom. There's two offices, main area, master suite, two other bedrooms. So basically, 1, 2, 3, 4 bedrooms, 2 offices, and a gym. And a storage underneath. These elevations don't do it justice. I'll get to the renderings. But this is the main house, the south elevation. So basically, the front door. The north elevation, backyard where the pool is. West elevation is where the garage is. And then the east elevation... or excuse me, east elevation is where the gym is, and the west elevation is where the garage is. The applicant has provided some renderings. This is the entry court where we stood today. New water features, Lily Pond. This is looking from the front door. Renderings are also back here. And the six-car garage with three doors and motor court. And I mentioned this in the field trip this morning, but this is where the fire department is gonna require the turnaround be built so that they could have a hose 100-foot. This is the new pool, rectangular backyard. This is the proposed tennis court... or tennis cabana. Tennis court is obviously right here. Two-way fireplace, water hookups for a barn, dishwasher, and then the barbecue area is right there. This is the raised deck outside of the gym. And this is the raised deck area. And then we'll take steps down to the orchard area. The grading plan. This was brought up this morning in the field trip. It will be balanced onsite with a little bit of export. And one of the plant... the Planning Commission asked about this lower pad area. What is the grading? How is this grading gonna change? And basically, the engineer did respond to me via email, so I'm just reading what he said to me today. The average depth of the fill is eight feet. Maximum is nine. So the nine feet is also on the grading portion... this nine feet is on the grading portion to the south. The south pad slopes from north to south, and it's gonna be nine foot at the south end. So he basically needs to balance this pad. And there's basically 4,000 cubic yards of balance, if you will. So 8 feet here to 9 feet here, north to south. And our engineer is here to elaborate if needed. The landscape plan has been reviewed by the contract... or the city's contract landscape architect. Of course, we'll need an irrigation plan to make sure that it meets Muelo Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance. We did receive public comment as a result of the notice, including 6 George F., I mentioned, the property owner wanted just to know what the plans were. We talked on the phone, and he didn't show up or submit anything formally. And then also, the RHCA, the HOA submitted some comments that were part of your staff report to simplify the roof line. And the applicant is aware of these, obviously, and consider modifying the gable roof at the southeast wing to hip. This also is exempt from CEQA, 15303, new construction. And therefore, staff recommends that you open the public hearing, take public testimony, close public hearing, and discuss the proposed project. Should the Planning Commission decide to approve the project, a draft resolution has been approved... provided to you. The applicant and architect, Joseph Spear, is here, as well as his team, to answer any further questions the Planning Commission may have. And also, the property owner and his family came too.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for her before we open it up to the public? Okay, great, thank you. At this point, Tom, I'm gonna open it up to the public. If you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name.
Hello. Joe Spear, architect. The applicant for this project here. So just, you know, you did a fabulous job, so thank you. So I don't have that much to say. Just wanted to draw light to a few things. The style of architecture that we're going for with the RHCA is traditional ranch-style architecture. And we have already... in the proposal that you see today, some of the things have been incorporated that RHCA has already mentioned to us. A few things to just kind of, you know, reiterate a little bit. The house is... from a massing standpoint, is fairly similar to what's there today. It is increasing, but from just kind of a general feel, we tried to kind of keep it in a similar massing situation to kind of expedite things, hopefully. Yeah, similar location. The pool is in a similar location. And then, as far as lot disturbance, we are increasing a little bit, but we also tried to keep that to as minimal as we possibly could. And then, building pad coverage. We're actually reducing building pad coverage. So it's going from 99,000 to 96,000. And then, structural coverage also has kind of a similar thing going on with being somewhat similar. There is... so, you know, overall, the application we tried to make to have... to be kind of in line with a good deal of what was there before. And all the changes that we made are very specific to what the Yangs are looking for with their home. We have them here today, so they're gonna come up and speak for a minute here. That's all right.
Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. Frank Yang here. So I'm super excited to be here. My family's excited because we can't wait to start building our dream home here. Little introduction. I've been here since the early 80s. And then I married Sandy, my wife, right there, 1998. So we... I contered and moved to Palos Verdes, and so I've been here since the early 80s. And so our daughter, Tatum, over there. So we have another son, Jordan, who graduated, is in New York. So, you know, we love Palos Verdes. So, you know, we love Palos Verdes, we're in Palos Estates right now. We always love Rolling Hills, so we've been looking around back here, have friends back here, and it just, finally, we found this lot, we fell in love with it, and we, we knew it was a huge project, but it's kind of like, you got to start somewhere and just, just do it and really build our life here, and so we're excited about it. Our hope is that we create something that's right for us and beautiful for the community. I think that's what we're trying to do. We, we have, we spend a lot of time with landscaping to make things really beautiful, very nature. I think I saw that. And we just want this to be, I heard a lot of horror stories about our neighbor taking 10 years to build, and, you know, like, my son didn't get to enjoy this house, and she's 11, so we're hoping that, you know, hopefully, she gets to be in the house for a little bit. So, yeah, that's about it. So, any questions for us?
She looks excited to be here.
Well, she was, she was a little scared.
I don't blame you. I'm not happy either, okay? Just for the record. Yeah, well, thank you. Welcome to the neighborhood. I mean, from the pictures, it looks beautiful, so...
Thank you very much. All right.
So, we are, we're here...
Say your name.
Oh, yes, Joe Spear. I apologize. Joe Spear, we're here to answer any questions that you have. Both Dan Bolton and I are happy to...
Got a question for Mr. Bolton.
All right.
Come on up to the hot seat. Question for you, and maybe you can pull up the grading slide. So, when we were out there this morning, you were talking about you're going to lower the one side over towards the tennis court, and you're going to fill that other side, which I, I don't know that I really have any issue with it, but why aren't we showing that other side as having some earth movement and, and grading done there?
Dan Bolton, Bolton Engineering.
Thank you.
The, when you say the other, I'm not sure what you mean by the other.
Well, I thought you, you see where the tennis court is in the new...
Yeah.
I thought you were moving some dirt from that side...
Yeah, this...
Over.
There's a little bit of fine grading taking place in this area. Most of the cut is happening in here, so all this cut is coming out. There's actually a little bit of cut taking place in the front yard, or what we are calling the front yard. But, yeah, the, the bulk of the cut is those kind of two mounds on either side of the driveway. You know, as you may recall, when you come up to the house, you actually come up the driveway, so the driveway mount, the, the high point of the driveway is probably three feet higher than the house, and then the mounds on either side of that are higher still. And so, the, the cut is mostly happening, the, the pad isn't really moving, you know, the pad's staying at the same elevation, but that whole area is being cut down, as well as some of the sculpting taking place in here.
So, should we be showing that there's a little bit of cut in that area?
We are. Yeah, you know, we've kind of got the red shading. This is, I feel like this is kind of faded back. You can see on the, the printed version, you know, we're showing the, the cut here.
Okay, that, that's better. I mean, at least that, because that didn't show it.
Yeah, it's, it's, that, the, this is pretty faded compared to the printed version.
That's a much better, thank you, that.
Can I bring this to you? With that...
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd like, I'd like to see it. Maybe we can pass it around so everybody can see it.
And essentially, the cut is being done, and then you're filling because you have the cut?
Yes.
So, the other alternative would be, which we don't care for, is you, you take the fill off-site.
Makes, makes a lot of sense.
That's right. That's right.
So, you don't have to take it off-site.
Exactly. Okay.
And to kind of have a bit more, I mean, there, there's some functionality, virtue to it. You know, as you may recall, when we were on that, what I'm calling currently the play pad, you know, where the play, there was a pretty tall retaining wall at the back of that, you know, there's like an eight-foot wall back there. So, there's a, a lot of grade difference, and so we all, in addition to making the site balance, and, you know, which is a, a general plan requirement, as well as a requirement of zoning code, it also creates a, a bit more usability, you know, the, the relationship between the two grades, so...
Yeah, and, and, you know, listen, anytime we can balance it on-site, I'm all for it, right? I don't have any issue with you doing it. This didn't show it.
Sure.
That, that did, so that, that was very, very helpful.
And we're gonna... How about the lighting?
Yeah. No, that's great. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, we'll close the public hearing, and we will discuss it among ourselves, the commissioners. Who would like to start?
I'll, I'll kick it off, and just following your comment, I was concerned I heard eight to nine feet, but didn't see where I was coming from. It did make sense, but I understand now with the, with the paper version of the, the product in all, I, I don't, I don't really see any issues with the, the, the development and, and the, the build. Are the necessary retaining walls, the slight increase in disturbance, I think it's about 3 percent additional disturbance, none of that's going to be seen, and I think it makes sense for the overall scope of the project.
I'll say I agree, and I think the oversight with the, with the additional disturbance really comes from, as we pointed out today, the fire turnaround spot on the driveway that if you remove that, they'd probably be about where they are. So, I think it, it is justifiable, and as Sean mentioned, it's, it's not noticeable in, so, in, in general, I think it'd be a great project.
I agree with both the gentlemen, and the renderings are beautiful, and it looks very fitting for the community, and, yeah, I think this is going to be great. I don't have any issues.
Okay.
Me neither. I'm glad that the land has gone a good steward. It is beautiful. It was so helpful to walk the property this morning.
Okay. Well, I will tell you, you've got one of the best sites in the city. That, that, that parcel of land is absolutely spectacular. So, all right, somebody want to make a motion?
I will. And before I do, I wanted to mention, I, I said something to the owner earlier today. It is a very unique property in the city, not just because of the beauty of the property and stuff, but because the Safos Rest location at the bottom of their easement that the community, the horse community and the hiking community, the walking community all appreciate, so glad to see it's in good hands. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 25-029, as, as written.
All second. Great. You want to do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Cardenas. Commissioner Sue. Commissioner Douglas.
Approved.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Chair Chell.
Yes. Okay. Moving on, discussion, you're, you're welcome, thank you. Hey, off the record, I just approved that garage. Don't get any ideas. Now, get out of here. Okay. Are there any discussion items?
Um, not at all.
Okay. Scheduled field trips, do we have any of those?
No.
Stephanie, do we have any scheduled field trips?
Yes, we do. We have three Outrider.
Yes, we do. We have three Outrider, and then we will be doing one Hackamore.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll do that at 7:30 on August 19th, at 7:30 in the morning, then. Okay. Sounds great. Are there any matters from the planning commission?
Nope.
Okay. Are there any matters from the members of staff?
No.
Wow. Okay. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, it's running 39 minutes.
Wow. I'm slow, I apologize.